Okay.
Okay, it looks like we're all set. Good evening. Welcome to the City Council Work Session, February 1st. I'd like to call the meeting in order and start with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and Clerk, if you could please call the roll.
Counselor Moon?
Here.
Counselor Galanese?
Here.
Counselor Burrow?
Here.
Counselor Peeler?
Here.
Counselor Regan?
Here.
Counselor Camera?
Here.
Counselor Salamandra?
Here.
Counselor Pruitt?
Here.
Mayor Valentino?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And so this is kind of our freelance work session to talk about ideas and toss them around. Counselor Pruitt, thank you very much for being active and giving us a list of 25 different ideas that you have come up with. I've gone through the 25 myself and you know, I've kind of narrowed it down to a few that I really like to focus on and I hope everybody else has kind of their list of what they would like to talk about. There's just maybe some procedures or cleanup on how we're going to do work sessions. I think we've kind of tossed that around. Do we want to toss ideas out? Do we want to take turns and go from counselor to counselor? So I think I'd like to start with that and just see what council would like to do and not just this work session, but future work sessions. Would you like to have topics brought forward by different counselors and rotate through counselors? Or would you like to just kind of freelance on the Monday morning before the meeting? Open for discussion and don't hesitate to unmute yourself. Just be polite. Go ahead, Counselor Galanese, jump right in.
Well, I think that it's important to moving forward, you know, during this COVID and after the COVID that we sort of concentrate on economic development and the path we're going to take with that. And also as city staff, I would like to know, I drove, I drive around a lot lately and I see, you know, downtown's looking beautiful, but we do have still a lot of open storefronts. What is the city doing as far as headhunting businesses, attract businesses for those storefronts? Same with, you know, some of the lots, like, you know, there's been some things that I think that we need to talk about and it could be, you know, like the Legion, where do some of the projects that we've been talking about since last year, where do they stand now? I think those are two main issues that I'd like to talk about.
Okay. Before we get into topics, I'd really like to talk about how we'd like to move forward procedurally in these work sessions. So shall we pick topics like at the end of this meeting, we pick the topic for the next meeting? Or do we kind of rotate? Whoever the topics are comes from specific councils, like we have nine of us. So for the next nine work sessions, we can rotate through each counselor and have that counselor bring a work session item forward. And it could be two counselors in one meeting too. So I'm looking for more procedural, how to move forward and get some format to it.
Well.
Go ahead.
So I, I like the idea because I would be worried so many times when we want to talk about things, another issue will come up and take the conversation away. So I would be worried to have it be a free for all and have no agenda. But I'm also worried that if we pick nine different counselors' issues that they drag out and that you might not get some, a time that is most relevant. So I would be open, personally, I would, I think that each counselor should take on like a month to facilitate so it doesn't all fall on Counselor Pruitt. And then counselors could suggest their agenda items to that counselor that week and they would be responsible for kind of keeping the meeting.
I like that idea. Others? Counselor Cameron?
Well, I hear Laura and Frank and stuff, I think though we have to kind of think ahead as to what, what results in action items for the city manager and her staff to pursue. So we've got to find a way over the course of these conversations to point the spear at only one or two things that they're going to devote their, I mean, they're going to, you know, keep moving all the dials and all that stuff. But, but the thing is is that we have to focus on, you know, I mean, to some extent, we have to help her prioritize the agenda. We have, we can, I'm sure come up with, if, if every counselor had one thing they wanted to see pursue that, pursue, that'd be nine things, you know, and, and if, let's say I decided I want to do this, but I speak second and another counselor says that issue before me, but we make a rule that says, well, then you got to come up with something else because we want nine ideas. We still have to end up, is our nine ideas too much for the city manager to pursue with vengeance? And so what, you know, I don't know. And of course, I think, I just think there's, we should be talking about, I mean, Frank said economic development, we should be talking about ways to make money for the city. That's, we need to make money.
One thing, and I, and I can appreciate what you're saying. One thing I don't want to do is I don't want to cloud a work session with our retreat. So I, you know, in my opinion, our retreat is the opportunity to get a state of the city address from our city manager and then to go into our initiatives for 2021. It's, I mean, you're hitting the nail on the head. For, for our retreat, we really need to set staff on a path, on the priorities that we expect as a council, we expect to be accomplished in 2021. So to me, the work session might entail some of that, but I think it's going to take a different, kind of different format, different look.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Ken too about that. I was thinking of this more as like our time to work and develop ideas, not necessarily as seeing that it's like Sage, this is our direction. So I don't necessarily think it would be nine different projects for the city manager. It's mostly like projects for ourselves.
Well, I hear you and I, I think one of the things that I, I kind of got a little, something I throw out to everybody. I wasn't thinking of it this way, but there are merchants on Castle Street that are anticipating that we're going to dig that whole street up in the spring and, you know, do those streetscape under DRI, right? From library to the lake. And some of those people are wondering, how long is it going to, how long is heavy construction going to be outside of their, their store, shop, or place of business? Especially if your restaurants or bars and things, they're just wondering like, you know, is it going to be a month of work digging right there in front of my place? Or are we going to be able to go through it? So that's something I'd be interested in hearing about from Sage is to what the time, what the, what the, you know, what's the profile of a project like that? Certainly, I know, I know Lafayette Avenue is not applicable. I mean, Lafayette is, it's just incredible. It's just incredible. So, okay, I'm sorry.
Counselor Regan, raise your hand. Counselor Galanese has got a hand. I'm just asking, you guys can jump in, just be polite.
I'll be quick. I, it almost sounds, I don't know how to formalize this, but it almost sounds like we could stand for a five-minute update from our city manager on projects that we don't seem to know about. Like I get, you know, that American Legion came up. I keep hearing it sold. I am knowing, you know, and like Ken's question is now, I mean, a really quick thing that somehow we don't get to in a regular meeting, just an update. But then in terms of topics that we discuss, I'm not as keen on each individual counselor coming up with something because really, in a lot of ways, this may be more beneficial if it's a timely thing and maybe something that happens that month urges a certain issue to come to the table for discussion. And I like the idea of having a topic though, or maybe two topics that we cover at a meeting that we know about in advance of the meeting so that we're prepared to think about it a little bit, whether it's our issue or not. But I, I like having it more issue driven than individual counselor driven.
I agree.
I agree.
I wouldn't mind hearing it. Do we, did we really sell? Is the Legion really sold?
I'll be happy to update you on that. Go ahead, Counselor Galanese.
Well, one of the things that I think that we need to discuss as a council are some of the loose ends that we're part of from last year, like boards and commissions. I think that that's a topic that we need to discuss, meaning there wasn't too many meetings that were, I'm going to say, I don't even want to use this word, but nonproductive because of COVID. So I feel as though, because of all that we have going on, I think that anyone whose seat was up in 2020, they should have an extension, whether, if they want it or not, for another year. I feel that it's only fair and I think, you know, me and Ken, me and Ken, we didn't talk about it personally, but in emails we exchanged, like Tamara E. Cattell though, we both feel as though she didn't, she, she wants to contribute to the city, who's on a board and the board really probably only met once, maybe twice. And we feel as though that she should continue on that board. And I feel that way for all the boards right now. An extension of a year. And also I feel as though like anybody who has any restrictions as far as sidewalks, they have to be compliance of last year for code. Obviously, if they're selling the home, that's a whole different story, but I'm talking about homeowners that have violations, that they have to replace their sidewalks, they should have a year extension on that from whatever the date we set. I think it's only fair during these times to give them a little relief. I think we need to key on the little things like that, the loose ends of the impact that COVID had had on the small things that could impact our community, to give them a little bit relief. But I do think that economic about.
Go ahead. Sorry, I thought you were done.
You're good.
Counselor Pruitt and Counselor Salamandra, raise your hand, jump in.
Yes, I think, I think some of the things Frank's bringing up are exactly what I thought we would, we originally indicated that we wanted to discuss at this type of session. I sort of look at it almost like it's a lunch. Instead of just four of us at max being able to get together, it's an open session that actually all of us in a sort of a lunchtime session can get together. But, and that's the way I've always looked at it and I thought the way we originally set it up. However, I just heard something that sounded pretty good to me in terms of organizing it and getting back to what you were saying, Mayor, and asking us to do, and that is to set the process. And I thought Laura had a great idea to rotate some sort of moderation through the nine of us, if you will. And that individual could really assemble any input coming in from any counselor really that they'd like to have on the agenda. And they could, you know, we could certainly stray from that, but most of the agenda would be set with some, some items that were brought forward. I think really bringing some things up that are timely, that might have just happened earlier, a newspaper article or something the state just announced or whatever. You know, I think it's always good to be able to bring something up ad hoc. So there ought to be a little time for that. And I know we're somehow abbreviating the meetings to two hours versus the three we originally had targeted. And I'm willing to go for three, since I think we've got more than enough topics to cover. Frank's just mentioned several that I think we could spend a good 15 minutes on. And remember, we're not supposed to come to any conclusions at this meeting. It's basically to try to see if there's any traction on the ideas. I'll give you an example, for me, Frank's mentioned some, but I'm still confused whether we're going to change the penalty on the water sewer bills, you know, from 15% after one day. I know we've talked about it several times, but we've never really decided, you know, do we, do we do a thumbs up or side, you know, one of those straw votes that we talked about. So I think this session should be sort of brainstorming on, but with more focus is what I hear you all saying. And I think Laura's way of putting it, it's good to me, have an agenda with some subtopics as might, might be more, more timely that have just come up. How does that sound to folks?
It sounds, I love that.
Sounds good.
I'd like to make a suggestion that if it's going to be for three hours, why doesn't, why not the first hour we brainstorm? And then on what we brainstorm on, we concentrate on the next two hours or this meeting for three hours, we brainstorm. In the next meeting, we pick two topics for the next meeting to talk about for the three hours. I don't know, I'm just trying to, I mean, we got to be efficient with our time spent together in these work sessions. I just feel that we need to find the best way.
Can I interject real quick? And I, and it's the process that Steve brought up and I want to make sure that, because I have some notes from when this meeting was proposed several months ago, actually, I think it was like nine months ago or more, when we started talking about these. And one of the main goals was to make sure that everyone was on the same page and prepared for the following council meeting. So I'd like to make sure that if we denote, I don't know, an agenda or an itinerary of how these meetings go, I'd like to just dedicate either the first portion or the last portion to any questions or clarifications that are required for the following agenda so that the staff are here to address those questions and that we're prepared and efficient for the Wednesday meeting. And that's how I recollect that these sessions are going or, or were inspired to begin. And I like that we're using them for other reasons and for lunches, but, or open think tank dialogues, which are so important. I also want to make sure that there, we're using them for the intended purpose as well, which is to make sure that we can be efficient and avoid confusion on Wednesday night. Thank you. And I also think one of the, a really good way to set some examples or some topics would be to cross-reference anyone's ideas or John's list with things that we talked about in the previous retreat that have gone undeveloped or need development still. Thank you.
So.
Counselor Salamandra?
Thanks. So just quickly, I would like to say, this is not to say that I disagree with anything Frank said about those issues that he brought up, but that to me has been like, the way that this isn't working is to say, like Frank has two ideas, but they're not brought up as agenda items. They're just brought up as statements by Frank and then the rest of us don't weigh in on it and then it doesn't get a clear result. So whether or not I, so that, that to me, it seems like the waste of time, like rolling the wheels that we keep getting into. So like economic development, yeah, we talked about that. That needs to be one of the issues, but it can't just be somebody saying economic development needs to be this because the nine of, or nine of us are not weighing in on that. And so I like a structure that doesn't put more work on staff or on John for liking this idea and driving it forward, to say that maybe we structure the three hours in a way that says like unfinished business, new ideas, agenda-related topics for city manager to answer. That way we're getting in a system where we know where to bring our concerns. So if you're concerned about employees driving vehicles home, there would be a spot in the three-hour meeting to sign that up. And then if you're concerned because we all said we wanted to do something about the lakefront last year and that didn't happen, at least you know where it should go. So I would like to concentrate on getting that structure and that procedure developed so that we don't lose ideas like what Frank just suggested because it's not necessarily as an agenda item.
Go ahead, Jan.
Yeah, I just, I don't mind at all, like some clarity on the upcoming meeting, but Bill, I'm sorry, but I had the exact opposite recollection of these meetings. I mean, I thought these were going to be, I mean, I can remember even arguing to not have it on the Monday before so that we wouldn't just talk about the upcoming meeting, if you know what I mean. I mean, I think that the, in my mind, this meeting was more, you know, yeah, I mean, more free flow and not just clarity on the upcoming meeting. I mean, I could see like Laura was just suggesting though, breaking it into, because sometimes there are important questions that we can't seem to get answered, that would be helpful to know before the next meeting that's coming up. You know, maybe giving a slot to that in this session. But I'd like to see us develop ideas that aren't necessarily on the agenda for the next, you know, official city meeting.
Counselor Row, jump in.
Yeah. So, so one of the things that came up in previous meetings was that it's important for us to all be prepared at our council meeting and, and to either have answers to our questions answered or researched. So when there's something that we're voting on, we're actually coming to the meeting and we, and we know how we're voting. And, and I agree with Jan, we didn't want this to be a preview of a council meeting, but also to Bill's point, I think it would, it would be nice to have a certain portion of this three-hour lunch devoted to any specific questions to a resolution or to the city manager on, on what's coming up on the agenda. But, but, but just have that a small portion of our lunch. So, um, so, so I like that because I think it may make our, our monthly meeting be more efficient and make us more prepared. And so, and so then that just backs us up to, you know, should we have our agenda for our regular council meeting, a minimum of X number of days prior to the Monday before? And can we be on a regular schedule for that? So, um, it, so then if we have a routine, then okay, we have X number of days prior to our Monday meeting to actually be all prepared for our Wednesday meeting. And then if we have any further questions, to Bill's point, they can come tonight in the first 15 minutes or 30 minutes. So, so that's up to, it's up for us to decide when we tell our city clerk, you know, we should have our agenda seven days before our Monday or 10 days before our Monday meeting. And then we can be on a syllabus, if you will, to keep this train going straight down the track. So, so for example, I haven't studied all of my 117 minutes for our Wednesday meeting. And that's something that I would be doing, you know, tonight and tomorrow. But if I know that we're going to be having a review every Monday before our council meeting, then it would be nice to have the full agenda, say 10 days prior to tonight. So now I'm fully prepared for this meeting and then I'm just cleaning things up two days later from my monthly council meeting. How do people feel about that?
I, I think that we need to not fool ourselves. Nothing that we do takes 15 minutes, number one. Any single topic we talk about is usually a half an hour to an hour. Doesn't matter what it is. That just seems to be the trend. So we need to minimize it. And secondly, I think that we're starting to get out of the intentions of this meeting. We're starting to make it so structured that it might as well just be a city council meeting. And we're talking about agenda items and asking Sage questions. I think that it's, this is more of an opportunity for us to be more efficient working with each other. So when we do have the city council meetings, we're not spending a long period of time in those meetings. Because, you know, I guess you want to call, get into the weeds, we, we can get into the weeds here and it doesn't matter. But everyone's making good points. It's just, where do we go? How do we do it?
Well, I'll jump in a little bit because what I don't like to do is I don't like to come to a Monday night meeting and really have no idea where we're going and what we're going to talk about. I really like to have some kind of direction. And so our city clerk, I saw her over there and she puts the, the agenda items out in advance of our council meeting. And you mentioned 117 pages. A lot of those are just minutes from our previous meetings. So yes, they need review, but the important items that are coming up, unfinished business and new business are in a much more condensed version. So I would suggest focusing on those for the Monday night. So what I'm hearing, I've heard some really good ideas and I'm just trying to jot down those. I am not a big fan of the three-hour meeting. Even though I would have a three-hour slot, I would say, let's have a two-hour meeting. And if it runs over, it runs over. But I'm looking for focus and efficiency because that's one thing as a team, we really haven't kind of evolved to yet. Can I see your hand? Hold up a second. But what I'm, what I'm looking at is, I like the idea of taking ownership and not putting the onus directly on staff to talk about different topics and bring a topic forward. So in, in a two-hour, just in, and this is just me throwing ideas out. You can beat them up all you want. I got broad shoulders. I can take it. Okay? But having two counselors come up with a topic, topic one, topic two, and a lot, a half hour apiece, doesn't matter. And if, if you want to bring a topic forward, throw it out to the group and bring that topic forward. And like Laura said, do the homework, you know, conduct the meeting, be the facilitator for, for that portion of the meeting. That'll take us an hour. There's somewhere in the hour. It doesn't have to be that structured. And then to talk about maybe anything that we consider unfinished and a lot of half hour for that. And then leave the, the last half hour for clarification of upcoming agenda items. And when I say that, I'm talking about clarification for questions you might have for topics that are coming up on the agenda. Not to debate, not to negotiate, not to posture your position, but just for clarification of the upcoming meetings. Those are just kind of what I'm hearing from the group. Ken, go ahead, jump in.
Well, I, I'm, you know, I'm trying to, I don't know if there's a parallel or not. And one of the things I mentioned, I think in a previous meeting was, you know, the, our, our meetings aren't boring in contrast to the ones at the county level. And it's because at the county level, they have all these committees. And so the environmental quality committee, there's three or four people on that. They hold their, you know, their meetings and they even let public come in and, and talk and they come up with, with items they're going to bring to council, to their, to supervisors. So in a sense, what we have to do is just come up with some, maybe we look at it that way as this is a meeting of the committee. Now, and then we just come up with that theme. Maybe there's two themes for each session, one for, you know, an hour each. And we make progress along those lines and it may or may not end up, it certainly isn't going to end up in the next council meeting, which is, you know, just a couple of days away, but we can decide to prepare something for the following council meeting and those, you know, and we can give out assignments, whatever. So, but I think we should think about it in terms of two or three things each time. And that's, that's how you sort that out, you know, and if there've been big events, we, I think it's apropos that we ask, what are the next steps? Like I didn't know that the Legion had actually changed hands. I wasn't, I mean, I kept thinking it was going to happen.
It hasn't, it hasn't. And I'll update you.
Okay. I just, you know, just to have, because I'm kind of curious, what's the next step? And so, and what's the next step with, when, when is DRI break ground on Castle Street? It's something, I mean, I, I have an office there, but I can climb into that office no matter what, but my office is an office. It's not a place of walk, for walk-in business. So those people are wondering about that. What's it going to be like and how long it's going to last? And when's it going to start?
So I'm just still on a, I'm not following exactly how that gets, that conversation gets scheduled or how it's going to come up. So are we saying next month on this Monday, you will bring that up, Ken? I mean, one, one example of something I'd like to talk about is the housing crisis that we are facing. If, if I had a half an hour to discuss the housing crisis with this council, I might make a five-minute presentation to talk about what is going on here and nationally and what other communities are doing. And then I would love to hear how all of you feel like we should handle that. But how do I sign up for that? How do I get my, and how does Ken's answer? I'm still stuck there.
I just want to sort of say that I really liked your format there. I mean, I, I think it is important to, to get quick answers for things that are probably of interest to all of us without debating it regarding what we're discussing next time, if those are out there, you know, like, I don't know, I mean, a last minute question on, well, like if it were the Marine, you know, whatever, you can just imagine, something that's more factual than just a debate. And also answers to things like what Ken was just saying, you know, but short segments where you throw out a question and, and it's not a lot of research on the part of city management or whoever happens to know the answer. And we get updated and, and saving that maybe till the end or starting with it either way. But have two topics. One could be like what Laura's just suggesting. She would run that and, and you know, so you hear from so you hear from individuals what's important to them, what they want to be working on. And, and we, the person addressing it can get a response from other people. I think it'd be a very effective meeting that would help us as a group.
I, I would, I would like to know, like we keep bouncing over something that the mayor has an answer to, and it's important is where, where's the Legion? And he, he knows the answer. I think that he should talk about it now. I, I, I mean, I know the answer too, but it needs to be put out there so we can stop wondering. It's like, I got a secret to tell, but I'll tell you later.
Hey, if you brought lunch, we'd be talking about just lunch and we'd be throwing ideas back and forth. I don't see no food in front of me here. It's dinner time.
I thought that we would finish one conversation before we got onto the other one. So I appreciate waiting to talk about the Legion until we can clear this up.
Yeah, that is our challenge. And you just made a good point. Hey, how you doing in the background? I see our kids over there, Councilor Peeler. I just added current issues. So I, you know, I talked about topic one, topic two, anything unfinished, let's throw it out there. Clarification for upcoming agenda items and current issues. Those are kind of the five things. And, and Counselor Solomon, you said, how do you get on it? Well, listen, at the end of this meeting, I would love for two people to raise their hand saying, I want on the next Monday. And, and for tonight, I would like to, in full respect of Counselor Pruitt, I would like to have him take the lead if he really wanted to talk about a topic. Cause I can talk about the Legion. It'll take five or 10 minutes to fill you in on everything on the Legion. But, um, I just try to be respectful for the people who did all the homework coming to this meeting tonight. Go ahead, jump in.
Well, one, one thing, I, I mean, just, are there any, I, I put this, you know, this, uh, Greenwich generation thing on the agenda. I mean, and I sent as much information as I could about it. Either anybody that has any questions about it or because I haven't heard from anybody. So I, I'm hoping we don't have to discuss it at all. We, we're all ready to have me just say five minutes of something and then we're going to vote on it because everybody's had their questions answered.
I, I have a question about it. So I li- I like, I like that you always are so upfront in the first one, carrying the flag on all these environmental issues. I appreciate that. Especially ones like this one that directly affects our lake. But I have a question for yourself or maybe Sage or anyone else that could add to this is all these resolutions that we write, joining the fight for whatever it might be. Do we ever get any responses back from anybody or, you, you know, we always put forward these resolutions to like Seneca Meadows or Ontario County landfill or, you know, this Greenwood, Greenwood, uh, facility that's, comes into now. Do we ever get any feedback from that?
Yes, in the past, we have gotten, um, letters back from different people. I haven't on this particular one that we just did with Seneca Meadows, but we have in the past, we do get letters back. You know, either thanking us for our support or, or asking for, you know, more information, things like that. So yes, we do get responses.
Can we start putting them on our city webpage? Or our Facebook page, any of the letters that come back like that? I think that, you know,
I can put them wherever council wishes to have them.
Just because people are watching the meetings and they say, what, what, what is this about? And we, we have a resolution on it. We are, let's say, vote in favor of it. I think that people wonder what happens with it also, like just myself.
I think it would be nice just to get a correspondence report, whether, whether we publish it or not. It'd be, it'd be good to hear what people are kind of returning calls to the city so that we can get a vibe or get a pulse on that correspondence. That's important.
Yep.
It, it could just be attached to our agenda, couldn't it? With our, with our agenda packet?
Frank, I think a lot of times those, um, resolutions to stand against something are to signal to state government. So when we are Seneca Lake and Gas Free Seneca was opposed to the salt storage facility, they got every city council, like 26 municipalities to, to pass these resolutions. So then they could say to the governor, 26 municipalities representing a million people say no to this. So that's like, even though they don't, it might not shut down Greenwich. It's going to at least signal that the people here are opposed to it.
I can bring up a subject if you, if you want to start talking like the mayor said, I have something for tonight unless somebody else has something they'd like to bring up.
No, in all due respect, please do.
There was something that, uh, has been stirring around in my mind for quite a while. And that is that we had, uh, uh, you know, county supervisor come and speak. I think, I'm trying to remember now. I know at least once, maybe a couple of times. But by and large, we don't really have much of an idea of what's going on at the county legislative le- level. I don't know what our county supervisors are voting on, what they're doing, what their vote is standing for. I don't know how they're representing, you know, us around here. And somehow I feel as though, um, we have to strengthen that tie. I, I look at really, I, I think I talked to you before that I'm concerned about what, uh, I'm approximating, be happy to tell you the numbers, but on a roughly, uh, $18 million general budget. And going up at around 3% a year, we're looking at at least about a half a million dollar, you know, increased burn every year. And we keep talking about economic development. I went through the numbers last time. We'd be miracle workers. I mean, it would really be the miracle of loaves and fishes if we can do enough economic development to overcome uh, the trend longer term. So I, I'm curious really, uh, uh, of ways that we can try to surmount that. One of the ways I think is I think we have to get a better position with, with the county on several things such as low income housing subsidies, um, to perhaps sales tracks, dis- distribution to just a whole host of things, but we're, at least I can speak for myself. I'm left blind. I don't know what's going on there. I don't reach into it. So one of the things I would bring up in a session like this is, do you agree? Is there some way that we can strengthen the communication and get more involved? Can we ask that the, you know, that we get some sort of an update from someone somewhere on what's being voted on and how our supervisors are voting? Can we invite them to more of our meetings such as this meeting versus the council meeting? And what, and that's, this is the sort of thing I was thinking we were going to look to develop new ideas or cultivate new thinking at this type of meeting. So I don't have a particular slant on this in terms of, uh, this is what I recommend we do. And I wanted to throw it out to see if you folks thought there was a need and if so, how do we manage it?
I'm, I'm actually have that in my notes for, to do by the end of the week is to get ahold of Don Madora, Greg Benzowitz and Lou Gard to make them more active at our city council meetings. Give us updates. Also, I think we sort of shot ourselves in the foot when we first got into office, when we wanted to sue Casella and the county. Um, we put a resolution forward for I don't know how many millions of dollars, uh, towards the landfill, which I don't think they were too happy with. In fact, I know they're not too happy with. So we, we have to get in good terms back with them. And I don't know how we dial that back. Instead of asking for money, which they probably won't give us. But if you look at like Seneca Meadows, they always never turn down projects. Like I'm thinking because Casella in the county is directly impacting our lake. Maybe we could, um, ask them for money to enhance our creeks and streams for, uh, water runoff. Um, enhance our, our streams for a filtration system or to slow down erosion or something. I know that the, the town of Geneva is working with farmers. We have some major creeks that come right from the landfill that run this way. And I know they go directly into our lake. And I, I think that they would be, those conversations would be ones that they would be willing to have with us. Um, but I think that we sort of shot ourselves in the foot when we first got into office here and we put that resolution out stating that we wanted to sue the county. Or I don't know how much it was, a million and a half dollars or something like that. I mean, yeah, I understand what we were doing, but the 2 million, I mean, that doesn't, that doesn't say, hey, listen, we want to, uh, work with you guys, you know?
Well, actually Frank, you shouldn't have been talking to them about it until we all had our, our approach. That sort of lets the cat out of the bag, I think.
What's that? No, we, we made a resolution about it. I'm just saying, I'm just saying that I, I've heard from several people that they're not too happy about it, that the county supervisors with us. So, I mean, that's not hidden.
I see a lot of hands raising, but I see our city manager too. So I'd, I'd like to give her a little spotlight and then we can kind of just jump right back in.
I'm going to just say a quick thing. The unification committee did meet with our supervisors and representative with the county to discuss the idea that, that Counselor Cameron had brought forward of compensation. But one thing that did come out of that was that, um, the kind of wanting to put projects together that we could potentially get funded. So just the Counselor Pruitt was talking about working more with our county. And that was one of the goals of bringing our supervisors together, including Mark Benuti as the town supervisor, of starting those collaborations and knowing what's important to us and working together. But the other piece of it is that just boarding of those conversations about what possibilities might be out there. Not a host agreement, kind of a, a financial incentive, but are there other things that we can gain from it? And I'll stop there because this is more a council conversation.
Can, can I just add that, 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 yeah, I was in on that meeting and, um, the, um, green committee, a lot of the things that Frank is discussing is, is, uh, under the green committee. I mean, it's something that we talk about all the time. The town sustainability, um, committee is ahead of us in terms of, uh, drainage and things like that. But, um, we're meeting as a, a, a group because one of the things that was thought that would be more successful in presenting projects was if it had more of a regional approach. And, um, the town and the city are meeting together next week, the day after, or this week, the day after our meeting. And, uh, we've got several projects that we're considering and, and, um, yeah, so you'll be hearing a lot more about, about that kind of thing, including, um, you know, working closely with people really know what's going on and doing the kinds of, uh, work to identify clearly um, where we can, uh, best pursue asking for that kind of funding, you know, because apparently it's there and that's the way to get it, not by asking for dollars.
Casella is one thing, but there's got to be 24 different, uh, you know, things to talk about relative to the county. And that's really what a meeting like this should look to, to really come up with. We ought to really decide what, what are we benefiting from in terms of county organization and how can we improve upon that? And I, I think there's really some great opportunity there and I think we need it. There's at least four or five other things I think that we can do to try to mitigate our, our long range planning issues that I'm, I'm concerned with. But I think also we ought to do long range planning. And when we get to, get to retreat, that I hope that's one of the subjects that we bring up uh, as a goal. I know Adam's talked about it in the past and Sage has, and we've all talked about it a little bit. But I, I'd like to challenge everybody in terms of economic development to put together your own numbers and go out five years and see what kind of money do you think is really realistic for Geneva? How much we can bring in and will it overcome the burn rate that we have? I'd like for you to do that analysis because I have several ways. And I don't see it happening from economic development. I think it's going to have to take a combination of a few things. And I've heard Bill speak along those lines in the past, but I think we've sort of lost focus on that a little bit. I think also Ken talks quite often about efficiencies. So I think there's several things that we have to, to look at. And I, I look at a group like this, at this sort of meeting to, to bandy those ideas around a little bit more. I don't know when else we'll have a chance to do that. So what do you think? You know, do you think we need a five year plan or a three year plan? Do you think that we should be doing some forecasting for economic development to put some targets together? Are there some, some things we can do? I'm not recommending we do this, but I mean, you, for sake of example, getting our politicians behind us to see if we can get some relief on the, uh, on the, um, property tax exemptions that we have. You know, we're one of the worst in the state. Maybe there's some way that we can benefit from that. There's several things that we ought to try to do because I think we've got, you know, as our job should really be looking at not only this coming year, but I think several years out. And I'd like to start that, that discussion, if not right now. Maybe at a future meeting or sometime or at a retreat, but what do you think? Is this, is this a subject worth discussing?
I, I do, I, it's a subject worth discussing. I'm sorry, Laura. And, and I think this work session format would be a, a perfect time to hear from our, um, county reps on a regular periodic basis. So could we have a standing work session meeting with, with one of our reps, say every other month or every quarter? And, and, and they have the floor at six o'clock. And, and, and whatever the conversation is, you know, it's either, uh, they have the floor for a half an hour. Or it might be so involved where we would want them to have the whole two hour lunch. And as a, and, and so then it's a Q and A as opposed to coming in periodically to, to a council meeting and doing the same thing, which I find not nearly as effective as having a, a back and forth conversation with our, with our rep. Um, and then along those same lines, which we've talked about in the past as well, could we also use the work session, not to get off your topic, John? Could we also use this work session for presentations that are normally given at the council meeting? Which, which typically lasts oh, between five and 15 minutes. And, and instead of having the presentations at a council meeting, having them at the work session. Because this meeting is also public. So, so two questions there just for us to consider. Do we, do we want to, do we want to have our, our, our county reps come to this meeting on a regular basis, scheduled? And also, how do you feel about having all of our presentations at the work session instead of at the council meeting?
I, I do like the idea to have presentations at the work session. Um, if maybe there's a lot, we could make that decision to have the three hour meeting because our Wednesday meetings are just so long sometimes. And so um, anything we could do to put another hour on Monday and not on Wednesday, uh, seems to make sense to me. The thing about the county, uh, reps, I very much appreciate when we get an update from them and I would like to hear it more and possibly in this meeting. But it does seem like we are working on two different planets a lot of the time. So I think that maybe if we could have one update and then figure out a way that we can meet with the county legislators and and develop plans together. And then that reporting back would, would end up being more like a check on our work together rather than just an update, um, of what's going on. So I, I really think that that's important that our county legislators are working at and the same goals and plans and vision for our city. And I, I just don't think that we hear from them.
Um, just, I, I would like to, I hear what you're saying, Laura, but I, first of all, I just want to agree with Tom and you both. I think we should have county reps at our work sessions and presentations at the work sessions, but I don't want it to be an either or. You know, if, if there has to be a presentation at a city council meeting, then there, there has to be. But I think that we could make most of them at the work sessions. And I think that would be useful and it would save us time for our, our meetings. As far as the county's concerned, I don't know, Laura, are you suggesting that we're going to get supervisors from those other municipalities in the county to come and meet with us? Or are you just suggesting that?
No, I would just say like, say Lou, Dom and Greg Benzwick. Like if it's important to this council that we're, like, we think it's, Geneva should be getting more funding because, um, for housing or through, through whatever, because we have a disproportionate amount of, um, poverty here compared to other places in the county. Like that's something that we could be teaming with our county supervisors for, we could be writing a resolution or something. I don't even know how that works, but asking them or at least working together and then being able to check back on them. That way we're working towards it rather than just deciding in a meeting that we're going to tell the county that we want them to get us more money. Like making a plan together with the county supervisors about how they think that they could better advocate for Geneva with our help. Seems like, um, a good way going forward.
That, that makes sense. And I agree with that. Ju- just for the record though, I want to know, want you all to know that, I mean, you, you know, we have, I would say, certainly in my tenure on the green committee and everything, been kind of pissy with the, uh, county and they, you know, they know, they know about that, but they, they came up with the money when it was, when they needed to for the, you know, for the composting plant that we have here. And I mean, we're talking about, I think it's approaching a hu- you know, like 180,000 plus. Uh, it's, it's a serious chunk of money. And the, the reason they gave it to us, even though they were giving every other municipality money for their, let's say re- environmental recycling, renewable efforts, they were pretty thrilled because ours was unique compared to what everyone else was doing. Everyone else pretty much took their, depending on population, took their, their grant or whatever. This is two or three years ago. And they just put it into And they just put it into making their transfer station more organized and maybe a- able to handle more materials. But it it wasn't intrinsically new or innovative. And that's part of the reason they sort of backed off on just making just sharing the the one point seven, I think it's about one point seven million dollars a year. They stopped sharing it with everyone that way. And they've come up with their their publicity programs. They 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 think there's a lot more public education that's gotta go in. Uh and they, you know, when they, when they pulled Carla Jordan out of Casella and hired her as a planner, they had to give her something to do, so she became the advocate uh for public education on recycling and everything else. So there's machinations that go on over there, too. But I think that if we met with the three supervisors at a work session, we could have a very, I think it'd be a a good use of a couple of hours. So just to have them to be three more squares in this in this Zoom meeting. And we just all focus on what can the county do for us and what can we do for the county?
So so right there, Ken made just a great example is that if if we're on a schedule with the county, we we can say, okay, at our April work session, we would like to talk about this. And then and then they're prepared to send one, two or three of them um to to our work session. And we and we go over what we're interested in in uh learning about or or collaborating with. So um I mean, I'd I'd like to, I'd like to move where we go to the next step and and figure out a work session schedule with the county. And then some some meetings just might be an update or some might be specific on on um, you know, economic development, you know, a specific project or to Ken, or we want to talk about Sonica Meadows, or we want to talk about sales tax distribution, or we want to talk about recycling and have Jacob Fox come in with us. So um I'd I'd really like to move that county relationship along if I if we have agreement here.
Well, yeah, and so what what I'm I'm hearing is there's there's a little bit of a challenge when I hear Council Prue brought up the county supervisors and and getting more educated and understanding on and collaborative and our efforts together between the city council and the county supervisors would make sense. And then we kind of, you threw me a curve ball because then we we talked, we talked about um the our our growth of our budget and reaching out to the state and nonprofits. And then we talked about presentations. And I think that's one of our challenges as a council is there's a lot of good ideas that bounce around, but we bounce around so much that we really don't come to a focus and 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 drive a change somewhere. And I think, you know, so I want to talk about all three of those issues. But I think for me, the county supervisor issue is probably the one of the most important ones. And well, what we've done with resolutions or comments that we've made, we, some people think we're crazy, some people think uh we 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 have other concerns as a council as far as how we're looked at. And and you know what? In our first year, think we're crazy, okay? We're we're trying to do the right things. And I think it is extremely important that we don't have a county supervisor or a group of county supervisors come and just give us a report. We don't need your reading from a piece of paper telling us what the county's up to. We we just want to have some open dialogue. We want to have understanding. We want to understand more about the relationship with Casella. We want to understand more about the sales tax splits, you know? Let us know what you know about the current situations. Let us let us know about the the history of those situations. Let us know how we fit in the county is is probably the the, we are the highly populated city within the county. So we should have a better understanding with our supervisors on how we fit into the county and how we can work more closely. Yeah, so we've got to put on some kid gloves somewhere and we've got to probably address these situations a little differently um in order to to kind of advance our our initiatives. But I think that's a great idea is to bring, and what I don't want to do is I don't want to develop a structure that is standoffish to begin with. I think we should invite all three city county or county supervisors in. And just have a round table discussion saying, hey, what 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 do you guys talk about in the city of Geneva, for the city of Geneva? What are you guys moving forward for in the city of Geneva? You know, where do we fit in the whole thing? Let us understand that first and then, you know, then we can talk about ideas and how to modify things as we move forward. Trying to take small bites. Jump in.
That's what I said, right? Did or did I say something else?
No, you did, but I was talking about a variety of different inputs from everybody.
Okay, I three square, three more squares in the Zoom meeting.
I agree with you.
Um, I I think that we need to really concentrate on how we can be appealing and attractive to people to have money. We we need to figure out a way to get them here to spend money, developers, tourists. We need to, we need to decide whether we want to be a tourist attraction, uh in between go to stop or a destination. We still haven't established that, I I don't I don't think. We're all over the place. We need to focus on what what does, what do we want Geneva to be and and go from there? You know, the county is one thing, but I I don't think that we're different from any of the previous councils that all of a sudden we're gonna revamp the wheel with the county. I mean, we can enhance our relations with them, but I think that the county is doing an awful lot for the city of Geneva. I think that, I believe it's up to at least fifty percent of their budget goes to shared services and and those are the shared services that we are part of. Um, I I think that we need to like, a legion like, he, I mean, the deal didn't happen. I'm just gonna put it out there. Steve will give us details, but why didn't it happen? C C M I, why did they move from the city into the town? Why couldn't we close that deal? What did the town offer them to make them go there that we couldn't? Um, what's going on with North and Exchange? There's a lot of irons in the fire that we're not taking advantage of. And it seems like we let them slip through our fingers and then we're like, oh, well, there's somebody else. Well, people are not knocking down the doors in Geneva to come here and do things. So we need to start keying on those type of things or the Solar Village. It looks great, but it doesn't look like the end result. And I know it's spring, it it's springtime, they're gonna be doing the finishing touches. But there's a lot of things down there that I think that we've let get out of control. There, all these little things that we need to tighten the knots on and we're we're trying to brainstorm of new ideas, which is good, but I don't think that we're, these ideas are any different than any other councils. We need to be creative and innovative. And I just don't think in the last year we have been as a whole.
Counsel Galanese, with all due respect, it is very hard for me to follow a conversation when it seems that we are almost getting somewhere and then you bring in all of these economic development issues. I I would really just ask that, this is what this is about. If, I think you should be one of the people who sign up to ask those questions at another work session. But if we could finish this conversation about the county and make a resolution that we and move on from it, it would be very helpful. And then we can give your ideas the time that they deserve rather than trying to get back to the conversation we were having.
Sounds like a good idea. And from what I heard, the mayor had said uh first steps first, you know, uh take baby steps. And that is invite our our good counselor, you know, uh counselors to come on in for, I guess, a, I don't know, I don't know what meeting, but to come in in for a perhaps one, maybe maybe this meeting next month. And uh and let us to give us an update on what they're doing, what their policies are, their goals are, that sort of thing. That's what I heard. From there, we could break out later and they'll give us more information to be able to come up with, if anything, I uh ideas on what we would like to have them put forward. As I think uh someone just said, I think it was Laura, uh to advocate for. And that's really what they're supposed to do is to advocate for Geneva. So we're not asking something unusual. So Frank, it sounded almost like you thought we were sort of insulting or saying we're not getting enough or we're going on the rampage. No, we're just want better understanding and find out. I mean, like right now, I'm totally in the dark. I'd like to know what our county supervisors are are pushing toward. I have no idea and I don't know who else does. So that's really all I'm looking for. Uh and I think that's what, we ought to have a vote uh to bring it to a conclusion. If you want to move on to another subject, should we, should we take the mayor's outline, which sounds great to me? Or do you have some other alternative in terms of how we begin communications with them? His outline was to invite them to an upcoming meeting and we can designate which one.
Good idea, do it.
Yes.
Easy, invite them.
So so the, you know.
And they and they be, they be prepared to, well, and that we could break it into uh of uh maybe a couple of sections. They they're prepared to come and say, first of all, they each serve on a committee or two. So they can explain which committees they sit on and what are the topics that they've been discussing. But then we expect them to hang around after they've done, let's say, their fifteen or twenty minutes of, you know, this is what I do and this is where I'm, I fit in at the supervisor level. Then we, but we expect them then not to say, well, we'll see you later. You guys have a nice conversation. We expect them to then engage with us and we want an hour and a half of their time. And they, we want them to, they'll listen to us talk about how we, you know, about what they presented and how they, we think the county might be able to help us.
We're on the same team.
When we get, when we get them to our first work session, we can then, we can then bring up the topic of can you make this part of your regular schedule and come and see us uh every other month or once a quarter? So so that first work session will set the tone of the Q and A. And then we'll ask the question, you know, because it's gonna be very helpful, I'm sure. There's gonna be great dialogue from all of us and then we can get them out of routine. I mean, we have to start somewhere and it sounds like we're all interested.
I saw a bunch of thumbs up. I saw more than five, yep.
Yeah, I had to give mushrooms a marsh. No, I think it's a, I think it's a good idea.
Well, so then, uh how do we approach them?
Um, what, I can reach out to the three county supervisors and um see. Uh what I'll do is I'll I'll tell them about our brainstorming sessions um and invite them, say, we want to be educated on how Geneva fits in the county. So we want to bring them into one of our Monday work sessions and allow them the the time not to just give a report, but to have a good dialogue with us back and forth to kind of let us know what they're doing in their each individual little committees and, you know, kind of what they, what they know historically and what they know currently about how the city of Geneva fits into county. So let me reach out and do that. And I will ask for the March or April meeting, okay? Monday meeting before our council meeting. And I'll let everybody know how that works.
Sooner the better.
And then uh Mr. Mayor, maybe it would be o- okay after they agree to do it if we could send them some things that we are interested, like I'm particularly interested in what's going on with the housing at the county level. Like maybe I, we could ask those questions so they could prepare or is that later down the road?
I I think that comes secondary. Let us get educated first on where they are now and then then we can kind of bring issues forward.
Okay.
I just, I just feel as though that this is, these are questions that, I mean, Sage would know the answers to. I mean, we're speculating. I mean, is Sage, do you know the answers to some of these questions we're asking? As far as the county, what they're doing for us?
I do, I do. And I mean, it does make me wonder if Brian Young might want to participate too um or somebody else from the county, Tom Harvey in the planning office. Um, Mike, we work with Mike Menekowski all the time for economic development. We, you know, almost talk to him on a weekly basis. So I mean, depending on the topic, you might want to also have a staff member or staff member want, might want to participate, depending on what path you want to go down, especially if you're looking for the history on on something too. So um maybe starting with that more general, just setting up the framework about working together. And then I think it would be helpful as Counselor Salamander has, let's have a topic that they could come back with because they may want to have additional people join the conversation.
Well, I really think we should relationship build first before we start talking about specific topics.
Well, I think, I I actually think that's a very fantastic point, Mr. Mayor. And because of that, I can't see any intellectual or or factual reason why Sage can't produce the report of what she knows about what the county produces for us. So we have that information beforehand. Right? I mean, because relationships aside, you know, Sage, I mean, I think we need a, that's that staff direction where we need, we need at least a few people to kind of back that up. Just if if you know some of this information and we don't and we'd like to know it, I think it's extremely reasonable to have that information at our disposal.
That's such a wide brush, though. I'm concerned.
Really?
We're asking. I I think, I think.
Could we just get a, couldn't we just get even a five minutes from Sage now or ten minutes? So we have something to chew on in our heads?
It should be. I mean, is it more than a half a sheet of paper, a line item of things that they that they dole out? Is it three pages? Is it a thousand words?
And Sage, do you feel comfortable, you haven't had any time to?
I'm not asking for it now. I'm not asking for it.
I could go department by department and, you know, run through my laundry list. I I I guess my question is, is do you want that now or do you want that? I'm sure Brian Young would would say, oh, you forgot this, you forgot that and you forgot this. Um, between Adam and I, I'm sure we could hash out. But I guess is that what you're wanting to achieve at this moment?
Just give us something that you, things that you think we're interested in. You've heard.
I'd like to wait and hear from the county uh, that's what legislators, the county supervisors. Isn't that what we just spent like a half an hour?
We have a combo because the supervisors work on some things and then, you know, they may not be on the day to day, say, economic development. So we, we team approach for recruitment and for um retention, which is a big uh piece that the county focuses on is retaining and growing businesses. Just as much or maybe more heavily than recruitment. So we work together on our our grants and the packages for a company. Uh, not packages, but how do you make your business come here? So what grants are available? What loan funds are available to you, you know, for for people to stay? They have really good economic development, financial analysis. They have um a gentleman that works on that. So we often will work with them to get help a business do the numbers. So example was C C M I when they were coming to ask for a pilot application. It was lower than we wanted to see revenue wise for the city and the county and school district. And so, you know, we we tapped on them to um see if C C M I would want to work with them to show why their business to be successful with um with a pilot would need to be as low as as was requested. And um that's a resource for us to be able to have someone that could dive into the numbers with a business and help um flush those kind of things out. We also work on advocacy on that state for resources together for economic development. They have a gentleman who goes and meets with every business in the county, does the larger businesses. What are your job needs? What's going on? We we will go with them on those calls for the city so that you're always tapped in uh with that. So uh that's a snapshot of what resources. But I could probably, Adam, between Adam and I, spend the whole three hour session talking about how we partner with economic development on that front. So I I guess I'll stop there because each department does something different. You think about the sheriff's department and the police department. That's a real mutual aid that goes back and forth a a lot. And so that would be something for both the sheriff and for our police department to share examples on how they're uh working collaboratively. So we could spend a whole session on it. So I I will pause there because I don't know how deep you want me to go.
Why why don't we control our own economic development? It seems like we sort of have the county doing an awful lot of it and.
We don't, we partner because if you think about it, I work with you all. I work with all of our departments. You know, I also, actually, Adam and I run our IDA, our local development corporation, revolving loan fund. And so we found that we're stronger together. Um, and so we work, we work as a team.
How did you find you're stronger together?
Because if you think about, you know, I have so many hours in a day. I'm not a full time economic development director. Uh, it also is it to work with a company and say, we're gonna connect you with our county partners. We're gonna catch you, our state partners, and we're all working together. A business prefers to have more people at the table saying, you're important to us. We want you here in Geneva. Um, and so.
Well, I'm I'm with you, Sage. I think you you've got more work to do than most people do. So I'm not looking to add it more on. But it sounds to me like having someone vested in our interest would would make sense. So one of the things we, again, at a meeting like this, is we ought to really bring up that same old subject of when do we hire our own economic development manager? And so really, when it comes to budgeting, you know, this year, it's not that many months away now. Uh, we ought to keep that in mind. And I I I hear, I I always tend to think really, the person who hands you your paycheck, you have an allegiance to versus someone that sends it to you in the mail or electronically. It's the same thing with business development and economic development. I've been all over the country and even out of the country and and it's handshakes of the people who live right there. They don't send someone in from a county away. They don't send someone in from a county away. It'd be nice for us to, I think, control more of that ourselves. I think we'd get further. And everybody in Geneva is putting the future on economic development, which I think is great and we ought to do. And I think we'll do a good job with it. I don't think it'll cover. Everything we have to get done, but I I'd feel better if it was in our own control.
As I say, we we do. We are there. I'm just saying we use support. So it's not that we aren't present doing the handshaking too. We just. Do it as a team so that we're making sure we're bringing all the resources we possibly can to them.
Yeah, I think you might be mischaracterizing it, John. I mean, the fact is, is that if I was an outsider and I saw the city manager. The the uh the the county and a state representative or or a rep whatever all at the table. And they were all focused on Geneva, then I'd be okay with that and it looks better.
But if they're not from Geneva, I'm not sure they are, Ken.
Well, you that's then the question to ask Sage is, does Sage feel? That in working with the county and the other people that as as this team are triumphant. That there is other, there are other agendas and they are not working in our best interests. And is there a reason? For her to strike on her own and to say, well, we'll just do it ourselves. We'll get our own economic development officer and you, the county, you can just stand over there and wait. Because those are two different strategies. And the fact is, is that sometimes. And at least in my in in my line of work. When we are working with some very large corporations, even though we are a small consulting company that I work with. They feel better when we have three or four people at the table than they do just talking to me. Because they want to hear, they want to see heft and they want to see depth. And that's what Sage, working with the county and I let's say even the county super manager and maybe a supervisor all be at the table. That shows heft. And that's I just want to, I just want to champion that approach because. I don't know if just us having our own economic development director is any more powerful if they're not sitting also with the county and the state. You know, and other people. It doesn't make the right picture. So you have to look at it from that point of view.
But there's nothing that would prevent them from from coordinating with those people. It's just the first line of approach that, you know, in other words, your your first soldiers in the trenches right up front. You still have the generals in the background. You still have the state behind you. I mean, look around economic development in the county. We're not, we're not doing great. You know, really, we're not doing as well as the town is. So I I think there's got to be reasons for that. I'd like to have someone that at least to start the ball and be the.
Yeah, the taxes, those are the reasons. That's exactly what happened with the C C M.
Can we hear from the county economic developer what his plans are for Geneva um and have time to prepare our questions? Uh, when we talk about economic development, which um when we did the note post its last year, it wasn't the thing that I picked, but it seems to be the thing that we can. Constant, we're always talking about this council makes it its main goal. And so if we could just start this process, like actually talk to him. Find out what he's doing, then either give suggestions and and get somewhere, either see that he does or doesn't do what we. Want from him and then we'll be able to make a better decision about whether we need to hire our own. But I I'm not really sure that I can make a call like that right now. I also just want to say that economic development is also hu- housing. I I know I'm like preaching on it, but. And it can't just be, we want people with money to come here. It's like the city has to become a place that people want to live and people aren't going to come here and invest in. The city if they can't find a place to live. So we can't just think about it as businesses that want to spend money. We have to make life livable here for Geneva too. So I I would be I would be so happy to have the county director come. Or figure out a time to have a meeting with him so that we can ask these questions and see what his vision is and what kind of resources he's putting towards economic development here and seeing if it fits what we want.
Hooked to us last year, but nothing specific.
We would was, we did have someone at the at the retreat. Was that the economic developer? Mike, but we were new and I didn't really get it. I have a lot more to say this year.
They they work with our our business. I, you know, they're, they are working with us. They're not implying our our top down on us. You know, they are really. Nurturing and following what and supporting.
What you want, what you.
So my my two cents, because I don't know if it's good or bad that I've been doing this for a long time, but um I've worked with the county. I've I've been. On council when we had our own economic development staff. And I can tell you that um in the last ten years, without an economic development specialist on staff, we've made more progress. Than with an economic development specialist on staff. That doesn't mean we don't need one. That means that the one, and I got to be cautious here, the one we had or the way we were going about it was not as effective. And the reason we've landed a variety of different opportunities in the city of Geneva is that synergy between the I D A, between the city, the city I D A, the county I D A. And the economic development opportunities that we've been afforded. When you talk about our relationship between the town, or you can even go to Canada, you can go to any any city within. The county or town within the county and see what they have available. It comes down to a lot of different resources you might have. Are you close to the freeway? Do you have rail? Do you have property? There's there's a lot of complexity that comes into play with economic development. And Geneva might have certain assets that are valuable to certain companies that are looking and it might not have certain assets. So it's the county's role in many ways to be able to leverage the assets to draw a business, whether it's to Geneva or to another city. Or another town in the county to draw to Ontario County. That's the importance of the county idea. The city, of course. Has to want wants to jar everything. But when you look at what we have available as assets in our in our um uh industrial park. Or in our ag tech park, you know, we have limitations. So our focus is somewhat different than if you look at countywide focus. But I can't tell you enough how um, at least under Mike Manikowski's leadership. How the county has put us first in every role that they can put us first and has supported us in many ways. So.
How do we measure that, Mayor? Like, how do we know that that's, and it's nice to hear because everybody always says we're doing wonderfully and on the way up, but. I I don't know. Then, on the other hand, you say there's an awful lot of storefronts that are empty downtown. And we have businesses that are closing because of COVID. But so really, we you know, what are the metrics where we're doing wonderfully?
Well, good question. You know, Guardian Glass, Landing Guardian Glass, Macintosh Pallets, uh Ma- Macintosh Palette. Um, Retention Azotos, you know, those are large wins for the city of Geneva in many ways as far as employment goes. But it then it goes beyond that, you know, the support in in many other areas. And I don't, I don't have that list. Uh, Sage probably has a better list than I have. But those are the ones that just stand out in my mind as far as the support from the county.
Well, well, it's that's great and wish we had more of it is what I'm saying. You know, I I'm thinking of somebody like Katie Labby. I think she does a wonderful job. And you don't really, in economic development, in the places that I've been, and I, as I said, I've been quite a few of them. They they don't necessarily have the lieutenant governor greeting you when you walk through the door. You know, you have to have someone to attract people. Uh, I know from talking to business people downtown um that it's it's hard to get people sometimes to move into some of the the open storefronts. Boy, if you did some advertising down in New York City, people would love to come up here and open up a business. Uh, housing is cheap up here compared to anything they can have down there. You can't open up a restaurant or a brewery or something down there, anything like you can here. But who's doing the mailings and reaching out to them? Uh, who's doing the the, you know, the office work? Uh, to start the ball rolling. I'm not talking about Mike Manikowski, that that type of quality individual that will come in and. Close the deals or the panel that you want sitting around the table to put on the finesse. I I think you you have to get the ball rolling somewhere and that's where I see us. Having an opportunity and I don't think it has to be a a really expensive position. And I think it could be somebody maybe reallocating them and, you know, from our current staff. But I would think somebody dedicated to that would be beneficial to us.
I volunteer, Adam.
I I think that. We're always looking for somebody to help balance out of our problems. We need to be the driver of the ship. And we need to dictate what goes on. We depend on too uh too on too many other people to do the work that I feel we should be doing. I I don't know. You know, what's the right route? I mean, economic developer for ourselves. You know, do we need it or don't we need it? I I don't know. I mean, that's a gamble. But everything's a gamble, but we need, we need to start doing things differently than we've done. We need to start navigating the ship ourselves instead of, you know, Mike Manikowski does help and the county does help. They do do their part. Yeah, can we ask for more? Sure. But we can't depend on them to fix the problems that are here. First, we have to identify the problems that we have here. And I don't think that anyone's. Willing to have those conversations because they are tough ones. You know, it's always easy to say, well, we have property in uh industrial park and ag tech park, but. I can say that too, but what are we going to do to get people to come here to develop there? And I keep on saying the word development and people don't like to hear it, but. In order to get the water and sewer bills down and taxes down, we have to generate money. It's the bottom line and you can. Laugh and smile and think that that's not the problem. It's a problem. We have high taxes for a reason. We have sixty percent of of. Our our property off the tax roll and forty percent of the the city residents paying and putting the bill and those people aren't heard. And I think that we need to start actually listening to and identifying the problems that are creating this. Burden that we have year after year. It's pretty consistent.
I just want to chime in because I.
I'm on a bio break. It's all yours.
I was smiling, but I was smiling because I agree with you. I think there are are um like so many of these issues. It's so many issues rolled up into one. Um, you know, that it's the taxes that are too high. I. I think that's one reason that people don't come. But then you can look into the little nuances, things that we have discussed, like. You know, what the beautification committee is doing and and whoever was pointing out, um, John, I think was pointing out, you know, sending brochures or whatever. I mean, that's communications. I mean, all of these things weigh in. You can even go further down the line and, you know, point to the schools, which I personally think. Um, are, well, I haven't been as involved in recent years, but are much better than their reputation. I have two kids who had a wonderful education there, but we were always fighting to get a positive word out. It's it's a total. Picture that all rolls into how well we do. But one way to um. Attack it or uh, you know, is to is it sort of rolls into um something that came up earlier is to talk about. The whys, like, why did C C I um go to the town? I mean, so let's get that answer and 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 talk about. What could have changed that would have gotten them here rather than in the town where it is cheaper for a business to operate. But. If if people don't mind, I'd love to hear that answer. Maybe that can help.
Want to talk about it now?
You know, we're just saying before my check, I I I'm all for that, but I just want to. To also throw out something and I hope that can be answered and that is. You know. We need to renegotiate or at least call a pause to the. The I D A, our I D A, signing an agreement with Finger Lakes Railroad every ten years. We just, it comes along, we sign it. But the Finger Lakes Railroad only pays four thousand dollars. To the city. And you know what? I I've asked the question, when's the next one coming up? And what we could do is. We could dig in our heels. Frank was saying we should start, you know, maybe throwing our weight around. One of them would go is. Nobody's, nobody's signing this I D A this next time until we have a chance to weigh in. The I D A works for us, don't they?
And you you are the liaison councillor.
Oh, no, I I don't get this. I don't get to say anything if I was. That's not what they want me there for. I don't get to say, well, we'd really like to know this, but I would like to know the answer. When is the next lease up? Because what's happened the last two times is during my time when I'm checking on this stuff is it just gets signed.
I I would say that's one more thing we add to that list of unfinished business.
Taking us for granted. And yet, what are they doing down there? They just keep expanding and expanding. They've got ties all over the place. I sent you the memo that Dan Bellevue worked on. About what they're doing and they're taking advantage of us. It's basically a development creep, industrial development creek. Creep along our six ward. And so, I mean, we've got us, we've got to, you know, we we've got to get those things. I I'm asking Sage, when's the next lease up? We don't know.
I'll get your name. I don't know it off the top of my head.
I'm looking it up in my files now. I I have it. I just need to find it.
All know the answer.
Not a fax person, but I we can definitely get you that answer.
I I just want to say something about when it comes to an economic developer, economic planner, you also. You get what you pay for. So i- if you want somebody that. Can navigate the boat, you're going to have to pay. It's just like anything in life. You want something to move. You can get middle of the road, you can get low end, or you can, you can pay for somebody that's done it, knows how to do it, has the connections, has the relationship. And will bring us to where we need to go. Nothing's cheap and nothing's free in this world.
I have a different opinion on that. Um, I believe that we should be relying on the resources in our community and we hear it so. Frequently that people are willing and able to help. And so I don't necessarily think that we need to go out and spend top dollar in a pandemic when we've caught positions. Um, I think that we can first talk to the county and um then maybe real. I mean, if we're looking at volunteers to do other projects, we've seen that we got can get volunteer legal fee, not some things are volunteer and are free.
That's opinion.
What's not opinion is is numbers. And so in terms of economic development, you know, I think Laura mentioned housing, but also there's businesses involved. Remember, if we're increasing our expenses uh on the general budget by about half a million dollars uh every year. That's going to take, even if we have a hundred new homes with five thousand dollars in in uh real estate taxes, that's only going to cover that growth. So are are we going to be able to really put through economic development or something similar, some mix of houses and businesses that many in a year? It can't be just economic development. Remember, we have to look at also, you know, other forms of income and it could be. Increasing our sales tax by making it a more attractive community. Um, I have in my notes for the council meeting, some of the things I think. Uh, we've got a great opportunity for history here in this uh in this city that we're not really actualizing. There's people, a lot of people love history and I've got, I've got a list of. That I was putting together for the council meeting, but there's a a almost a dozen things that we have that are somewhat unique to the city. We're we're just not hyping, I think, some of the benefits that we really have in this beautiful uh, I remember Architectural Digest, I remember years ago. So said South Main Street was one of the most architecturally diverse streets in America and they did a highlight on it. I mean, we have some, you know, an architectural walk, a a history walk. I think I talked to Adam. I put a plan together for that a few years ago. And I'm still, I've got a copy of it right here, but it's rough. I'll bring it by. Uh, I think really to have the history walk walk to bring people, there's a lot of ways to raise money and to get us, you know, uh, I had. And economic development is not just building houses or getting pilots for new businesses. It's also improving the quality of life here. So I think as was said, so we can do it, but that's exactly, I I really loved today's conversation because I think it's exactly what I was hoping we could talk about in a meeting like this. Uh, and so I don't know. I don't know if you agree, but this is sort of the open brainstorming. We're not coming to a conclusion. We're introducing concepts. Should it be economic development person? Should there not be? How does it work? Who do we have to go to? Where can we learn? That's, this is the only time we have to do this sort of thing. So I I'm liking it. Bill?
So I could economic development, you know, is a really wide brush and a couple of people have touched upon it here. It's not just developing the O E O site. It's not just getting a guardian glass or or a pallet company, but. Any any vacancy that you see in the city of Geneva is potential for economic development. So so that four hundred square foot first floor space is economic development. But it doesn't take the county and Mike Manikowski and five people to impress a prospect. To help out the landlord to occupy that five hundred square feet. And and that's where having a team, which could be volunteers, it could be a committee of economic development. You know, trying to figure out, you know, why has the Holiday Inn been closed for twenty years and no one's on the first floor? I mean, I mean, that's just an example, you know, why why was Al's Inn empty for that long? All right. So so some of us know the reasons to that. But, you know, so is, you know, how are we going to work on filling um uh Riley J's? Yes, the real estate is for sale, but what are we going to put in that first, second and third floor? Okay, why is the building next to three oh five Main Street not had an occupancy in fifteen years? You know, has anyone reached out to the landlord to say, hey, how can we help you put an office, put retail, put whatever in there? So um, you know, uh, F L X Live has been closed for two and a half years. That's a huge storefront on a major artery. That's a huge storefront on a major artery to the city of Geneva. And is any, you know, has there been any input with the landlord on how do we fill that space? So it's huge. So, you know, all of this is economic development and it goes hand in hand with Sage's work and going for the big fish, but you know, sometimes the small fruit has a huge impact on economic development because it creates sidewalk traffic. It creates jobs and economic development is also used for existing businesses to help them grow, but to also stay in business. So economic development is not just developing a vacant parcel of land, but it's a really big, big topic. And it takes a lot of people with different areas of expertise. So I love this conversation as well. But, you know, when you see an empty storefront in downtown Geneva, it's like, okay, what can I put in there? That's economic development. So, you know, how are we going to work to do that? And we may, we may not need Sage to help us with that. You know, there might be someone in the Merchants Association through the BID that knows the contact for the landlord where we can fill that five hundred square foot spot. We have all this office space on the second floor of Franklin Square. You know, we, you know, how come we can't get anyone in there? So, I mean, this is all economic development. So I just want to throw that out there. It's not just developing the new home for five thousand dollars of tax, which is all important stuff, but you know, how do we keep a struggling business in business?
Hey, Tom, you've got a really, those are all very strong and reasonable things to say for economic development in regards to the downtown area. I think you have one of the most probably longstanding relationships with BID. And I'm wondering if you can bring them in to the table to work on that because one of the things that I struggle with, because I grew up working in downtown Geneva since I was eight years old. And what I find challenging is that Geneva's market, our marketplace of customers is not necessarily something that everyone knows about. And in order to have economic development, we have to understand the market. Who's spending money? Where are they spending money? And what are they spending money on? Right? And I don't know when's the last time we have, we've had any type of report that gave us that kind of market study for Geneva's economic strengths and weaknesses. And wouldn't that behoove BID to get involved in something like that?
It would and I'm sure I can get that data. I don't, I don't have it. I don't know how to get it, but that's not my line of work. But there's another powerful thing that comes into play here. And that is, and that is just the economy of the world and how the consumer is spending money. So, you know, in my earliest days of the BID, we used to sit around a table and say, how come we don't have a jewelry store? How come we don't have a bookstore? How come we don't have a shoe store? Well, well, all of those answers are really easy because they can't survive in a community of thirteen thousand unless they're actually debt free. You're not going to get a mom and pop jewelry store in a community of thirteen thousand. The economics of the jewelry store doesn't work. No different than a bookstore today, no different than a shoe store. Okay, all of you are probably thinking right now, well, how about Crown Jewelers? How about the shoe store in Canandaigua? Okay? One of the reasons that those places work is that there isn't the stress of maintaining the cash flow to cover debt because they've been established for so long. All right, so, you know, you read the big article about Eastview and the hopeful renaissance of Eastview Mall. And you look at one of their anchor tenants that they're bringing in, a huge jewelry store. Okay, where our little jewelry store in Geneva held on for five years looking for a buyer and couldn't find a buyer. All right, and that also included real estate. So, you know, there's a lot of economic pressure when people from outside of the business community saying, well, you know, how come we can't get another D'Aduro shoes? Okay?
Yeah, we can, it'll just fail.
Yeah, so it's, you know, it's not that easy. So, you know, I joke with my other business friends and say, oh, okay, it's a dollar and a dream. Well, if we can get a new venture retailer to actually get to three, four or five years, then we actually have a chance of keeping them in business for however you want to define the long haul. But most businesses fail, especially if they're a retailer, within five years. Either they don't have a suitable business plan going in or it's just, or they don't have experience in running that industry. And I'm talking about high margin businesses. A jewelry store is a very high margin business. Okay, but there's also a lot of overhead with it. As compared to the food and beverage industry, it's a very low margin business with an enormous overhead. So, you know, there's all these economic pressures that come into play. And now we, you know, have people that are, you know, doing most of their retailing online for all sorts of reasons. So that's a new competitor to everybody. So, anyway, economic development is, yes, how do we get that unique retailer to survive in small town America longer than just their one year lease? So.
It's a big conversation and I think
It's a huge, it's a huge conversation.
But it's
You know, it sounds like there's such an easy solution, but, you know, if you've, if you've never gone in to open up a retail business before or any type of business and it's just really hard to get people that consumer habit of buying clothes at your store when, you know, when they've been buying them from somewhere else.
Well, we need a little bit of a dose though of reality. And the fact is, is that our cities, our city right now is choked with UPS trucks and FedEx trucks and delivering stuff. So the whole game has changed. It doesn't matter really how you, a specific person, whether they have a good business plan or not. And, you know, whatever, they're not going to find a market in Geneva anymore.
That's right.
It doesn't exist. And so the thing is, is that I'm amazed though, because we went from, we're down to the nuts and bolts of what a small business might make and contribute to the city of Geneva's tax base. But John poo-pooed five hundred new houses at five thousand a crack. I mean, the fact is, is hopefully those people, they got families and so those people all walk around downtown drinking because we'll still have bars. But I don't know if they'll be buying their jewelry down in Geneva. But, so it's a combination of a lot of things, a lot of, but, but it's a lot of things. It's, and there are a few little things. But the fact is, is if we hire an economic development officer, you know, we can say, okay, you look fine, everything you know, you're, you're, you're great, you know, all these things. Guess what? We're going to break both your legs first because we only have forty, you know, basically forty-three percent of our population pays for a hundred percent of the taxes. And, you know, so you go out there, tie one hand around, you know, behind your neck and hop on one foot and take a trip somewhere and try to convince somebody to come here. We have got to start going after chunks. Chunks are a problem of this problem and we've got to get the solution in a lot of different places. There's no magic bullet. So I'd like to see an overall economic development strategy before we hire somebody because they're going to need to know the roadmap to pursue. And the fact is, is that the whole thing about the brochures and everything else, that is, that is low hanging fruit and that should be out there. There's a whole bunch of people in New York City and everyone else that are reevaluating their lives. And they're going, you mean, I can get a, I can get a half an acre and a two hundred fifty thousand dollar house which has three bathrooms in it? And, you know, in Geneva, who the hell cares about the taxes? I'm up here and they'll bring some people and they'll party. All we have to do is get through COVID. So I think we have to have an economic development plan before we have an economic development officer. And, you know, I think we can put that together because we need to know about Geneva. We need to be the ones doing it because we know about Geneva and we've learned all this.
Who do you think could put that together, Ken? That's a good point. I'm liking what you're saying. So who could actually do that?
Well, yeah. The fact is, is that, just think about it. Do you remember the DRI brochure that Matt Horn wrote? It was a hell of a brochure. It made Geneva sound like, you know, the promised land. It was terrific. And the fact is, is that I probably can't write as well as he could, but I had, I think I could do it. And I think there's people on this council, there's a whole bunch of people that could do this. We just got to get a bunch of, we got to get a person to coordinate the skills that we have right here in this community and we can put it together. It doesn't have to be fifty pages. It could be ten pages with a, with a product output, which is a brochure, like what Matt did.
Why don't you head up a subcommittee and choose a few people to go with you?
I got to, I have to retire first and I am not ready for that.
Is this something that Katie could work on Sage? And I would be glad to work with her if other people wanted to join.
Yeah, and I guess my, there are so many good ideas here tonight and so I would love for, maybe, and this is more maybe Counselor to land on something because we could go in so many different directions and there are good ideas and I guess I, my concern is that the last one gets grabbed on and run with without. So, yes, we can, but I almost want to talk about, about that because economic development has been discussed in many different ways here. And I think one of the biggest strengths that we do have in Geneva is leveraging partnerships. I mean, so many good examples. Council Borough was talking about BID. We have a new executive director, Michael Mills, that is really putting together a robust plan collaboratively for downtown, you know, including a regional advisory council, which is bringing in other folks to weigh in too. So we don't necessarily need to be doing our own downtown plan. We need to be coordinating with, with the vision of BID to work together on that. And similarly on many different fronts, but I guess from you all, the focus this last year has been a lot on residents. Tonight, I'm excited, I'm hearing other things that are important to you too. And I guess I'd love to have, get a more of a focus with you. But I know that, you know, Katie Leby has economic development on that, similar to what we've been doing in the city of, we're not trying to go after one industrial person. We have been working really hard on increasing businesses downtown, increasing those smaller businesses all the years of the micro enterprise because we've found that those are more stable. You might have one that goes out of business, but that's less people that go out of business than say, losing a large manufacturer. So a lot of the things that you're saying is really is building on momentum of things that have been happening. And I know Katie would probably love to jump in and work on something of this nature, just
Let me just say one thing.
And me too.
He does not have to start from scratch. There are ten economic development plans laying around somewhere that have been done somewhere that can be repurposed.
And we've been working from, you know, we've been, this last, I mean, the DRI was a good culmination of when we were articulating a lot of the things together. I don't want to, it doesn't need, there's no starting from scratch because there is a good base that we've been working on. So I agree, and you could absolutely borrow from other communities as well. There's no reason to do it all alone, but I guess I would just want to make sure that we're, we've been going a lot of different places tonight and starting to get some consensus, which is exciting to hear, but want to continue on that path.
And I just say quickly that I do love the idea that we're partnering with BID, but I would like to see Katie or you giving some kind of presentation too, so it's more of a planning aspect, citywide rather than just businesses planning for our future. I think that Katie did some economic development work in her history. So I would be really excited to see anything that you and she could come up with, even if it's presenting the ten plans that Ken says are hanging around. Just, I would like to see anything so we can just either vote it down or not and move on. Yeah.
Well, I think what Sage is asking makes a lot of sense. In other words, how do we boil this down into something manageable and realistic right now? And I think really, I'd like to offer something out there. And that is that if the objective is to write a, or update, or however you want to put it, economic development plan that maybe get Katie involved to sort of spearhead a subcommittee and then get a few of us from here to be able to join her, to be able to try to put such a plan together over the next several months. It doesn't have to really squish her work on anything else she's doing. So it's not urgent so much, but maybe over the next four or five months to be able to come up with some sort of economic development plan to bring back to the group to say, this is what we thought of. How does this sound? And if anybody agrees, then we could take action from there. So in summary, Katie with maybe three other people or perhaps four to be able to meet as a subcommittee to try to develop a plan utilizing some of the old plans for references. What is that? Does that slim it down Sage? Is the first steps? Oh, by the way, I should say, economic development being primarily relating to business, in a small business, not into industry or big manufacturing companies, but storefronts, things of that sort. And also it shouldn't be restricted to the BID. It should include Hamilton Street or, you know, Genesee Street or, you know, anywhere. Any place, you know, North Exchange, any place where there's business.
We need to, I'm sorry, yeah, we need to help the Town and Country Plaza.
Yes, yeah.
That is in desperate, desperate need.
Yeah, I just feel like there are so many obvious things that come up out of this conversation. I mean, you know, like asking about that holiday bar and these buildings. I mean, I would like to see us focus more on the small, I mean, the businesses, the buildings, the storefronts and the small businesses, how we can get those filled. I think it makes a big difference in the city. And when you have like a niche, a niche store, such as the one that always comes to mind for me is the bike shop. I mean, you know, if you're an expert in one little thing and it's something that you have to feel and touch yourself to get, you know, which of course is a limited number of things. But they draw in a lot of people and just the activity of people walking around downtown with the niche things. And a lot of them, like Tom, when you were bringing the jewelry store up, I have to point out Earthly Possessions, which is right around the corner, a jewelry store with other things as well. And there's a lot of hybrids going on where she does a lot of online business. Unfortunately, we lost almost a block of Seneca Street to a wonderful, longtime merchant who went all online. You know, so, but, but what, the other thing I've heard you speak to, to Tom, is the fact that what helps stores like Earthly Possessions is that she doesn't really have employees. She is the owner, operator, salesperson, she probably does her books, I don't know, but, and that's another thing. So it's a stressful thing for the people who are making it because they're, they're doing it all. But in any event, I would just say, yeah, let's not worry about industry, maybe not try to take on everything. But it seems like we could do more to attract businesses to those buildings and find out why they've been sitting there the way they have been for so long.
It's so much easier to get to the heart of the vacancy matter, when, to use that term again, the low hanging fruit. Because we, you know, somebody in the community knows the owner, knows where they live, has the contact information, can drive to their home, have a conversation and say, look, this is our plan. You know, and then you, and then you can work with bankers, you work with realtors, you work with an economic developer. You might work with a Michael Mills type. And, you know, this is not, this is not a Geneva problem. You know, pay, pay as much attention to other communities when you drive through as you do to your own. I always marvel and feel so good when I drive down Fall Street in Seneca Falls. All right, they're having a really hard time right now. Look at the vacancies on the first floor. You can do the same thing in Waterloo and they live on, they live on the five and twenty stretch. Geneva, downtown Geneva is not on the five and twenty stretch. So, you know, look at Canandaigua. They have a main thoroughfare going through their downtown. And just count the vacancies there as a percentage of the businesses that are open. So, and like Sage brought up, or not Sage, Jan, and I'll just bring it out there again, but, you know, the, the reason that so many businesses and I'll just bring it out there again, but you know, the, the reason that so many businesses in downtown are actually doing very well is because they have no employees. And, and your payroll, no matter what business you run, and we've talked about this as a council, that is the biggest piece of your business's overhead. It's labor. And, and I'll say it again, there are six businesses on Seneca Street between Linden Street and Main on the south, on the north side that have zero employees. And Yvette had her best year ever in twenty twenty from a sales standpoint. So when you're small, you're nimble, you know what's work, you know what works. Okay? But if you break your leg, your business is closed. So, you know, think, think about that as the huge struggle about, about how to open a business today as far as, as far as labor and, and, um, and, and competition and whatnot. But, but Jan, thanks for that reminder. And I, I can go through all of downtown Geneva and count how many businesses all have subcontractors and, and no employees in other businesses right down Exchange Street. And the reason that they're successful or that they're able to pay the rent, Lake City Hobby, is because they have no employees. And that's, and that's a function of how tough it is being in the retail business. Where I can, I can buy everything online. What's that?
All, all small downtown businesses, Tom, I feel like that, or I mean, Mom and Pops is not a, a phrase, it's legit.
Yeah, that's right. So.
Can I just, uh, I, I have a quick logistical question. Are we going later then? Are we going till nine? Or are we going till a little after eight? Or I don't know where we are on that.
I'm not because it said eight, so I don't know about you all.
Put my dinner in the oven, you know? But before we close, whenever that is, I do want to circle back. I asked earlier the, um, information on, on C M I, I, I always get the letters wrong, but, and also, uh, the big teaser of the night, which was the belt, or the, uh,
Legion.
The, the Legion, what's happening there. Uh, I don't want to cut this part short, but those are questions I'd love to see answered.
Can I just quickly say before you get into those, um, Sage, will we hear then, um, from Katie or from, and if, isn't there already an economic development subcommittee? That we made last year?
Yeah, and I, we are doing our department head retreat, which Katie will be participating in for O and I for our priorities. And so I'll be just bringing that suggestion back to her, but you remember, uh, I'm losing a staff person for retirement in beginning of April. We're shuffling things around. So not saying it's not, not possible, just want to make sure that if there are things that have to get dropped off to put this on, want to be able to present that clearly to.
I just want to.
Okay, let us know how we can help.
Every time there seems to be a new project, um, I've heard the name, can Katie do that? So kudos to Katie. Uh, she seems to be miraculous and, um, we should.
That's a fact.
She's taken on a lot of roles.
Sage, also, if you could just take one minute and answer Ken's question about the timeframe of the, the Castle Street, streetscape, please. At some point.
We don't have those full details. I'll give it really fast. It's going out to bid like February. And when, when we have the contractor, we'll get a better schedule. And we will, I already have it on, I, you know, meet weekly with Michael Mills, Adam and I do to do check-ins and that is on the, the list in terms of a strategy for that. I do not know yet how long they will be in front of a block, but it will be a while where, you know, it's um, but people, by understanding that there still will be access to businesses, but it is a critical piece and will be an important piece and time consuming to make sure that we do a good job getting people to, uh, the businesses. Um, so I don't have the specific details of the length of time or when and where the schedule will be once we get the contractor. Well, I have a better clearer picture, but we'll try to get at least a general sense sooner than that.
So it's taking place this year then, obviously, right, starting?
Okay, I'd like to draw a wrap up to this, but I see Counselor Pruitt, I want you to speak because you had your hand up.
It's okay, we've already passed the, the subject.
Okay.
I was just gonna try to summarize the question. Well, actually, did we really summarize?
Yes, we can.
You know, did Sage, did we get an answer to your question? How to slim everything down and point it?
No, but I don't, I don't expect it to be answered tonight. That's a deeper dive.
Should be, okay.
But I don't know if it's possible in the timeframe.
Yeah, and let's, let's, let's bring that to unfinished business at our next work session, okay? Because, you know, I have a lot of comments about economic development and the whole B I D and, and of a variety of other conversations that went on, but I'm trying to be polite at this point. Counselor Peel, are you wanting to say something?
Yeah, I didn't, I was, I was not aware that the whole conversation was going to be about econ development and I'm happy to have that conversation, but I have, um, an issue that I think can be discussed quickly and decided on quickly, possibly for record setting pace. So one of the things that we talked about when we, uh, in the communications subcommittee is uh, council information going out to the public. And one of the things that we lost in the budget cycle was live production from, from Finger Lakes, uh, public access television. And we can still get our programming on that, and I didn't know that we were stopping. Because they take submissions every day from everywhere, from PBAs to American Legions to VFWs and, and any other organization, and that's not pay for play. So Adam, Sage, Erica, whoever's setting up our live recorded Zoom sessions can contact them and send them the recorded session that you're seeing here. And it won't be live, but they can air it later. And that's part of their public access charter. So I would like us to decide whether it would be beneficial to direct staff to do that. It's no cost and it widens our range for, for people looking at our, our meetings. And I think it's important.
Thumbs up on me.
I agree. Great idea, Bill.
Awesome. It's not, it doesn't completely solve the problem, but it's almost.
It helps.
Yep.
Okay. Um, Sage, do you want to hit on C C M I and I'll hit on Legion?
Sure, nice to help with both. So C C M I, as I, um, sent out an update. So they were, as you know, they, they had, um, the intent to purchase a parcel in the industrial development park, about six acres at, at the corner of Doran Ave and Forge Avenue. And that came before Council for approval because you are one of the deciding factors uh, before the I D A blesses that. We have been working, so C C M I is currently on Middle Street and, and operates a very creative, classic uh, company and needing to grow and expand. Though one of their hiccups is we do have a high tax rate. And one of our creative solutions for that, uh, is through the I D A for a pilot. That is one of the incentives that makes us more competitive um, and gets us closer to our peers. Say, the town to be able to have, have that. Um, however, when, uh, C C M I, there were two factors that I heard. Um, and of course, anyone can follow up to, uh, dig in and deeper. Um, but this company, next turnover or potential sales would be in about fifteen years when a potential pilot would be done. There's no guarantee that the I D A would say yes to the first pilot, much less a second pilot, which doesn't guarantee that a sale would be as attractive. Um, a second thing was that the pilot request was fairly low. And as I mentioned, um, that is something that is concerning. If you're looking at a pilot, you do want it to still be financially beneficial to the city, to the county, to the school district. And so, uh, we had, um, we're working with them to say, okay, does it make sense? Can your company not, um, withstand more taxes to be a viable company? Um, so for Adam and I, you know, I've been working, uh, with C C M I, but having them in the town is still a plus for the city. Um, for, for them and for us. The jobs are still in Geneva. It puts them in a position where they do not have to, in theory, you never know what the town tax rate might be in fifteen years. Circumstances might change that the town would, um, have a tax rate that's the same as the city. Uh, but put them in a better position for their needs to be there. They still wanted to be in the city. So when we're doing that, you're always weighing, you know, what was the potential sales price uh, of the property? What's the long-term gain financially for both, you know, the savings for the company, but also for the gain for the city? So, um, I, I think we take it seriously of trying to make it a good fit for a company, but also a good fit for the city too. So we're thrilled that they're still here in the town of, of Geneva and they're going to make that work. We don't know how long they'll be at the Middle Street property. And as you know, uh, both in the comprehensive plan and the zoning update, Middle Street is primed for, you know, future housing, um, development needs. And so this could be very advantageous for both C C M I in the future, wanting to sell that building as well as, you know, a future developer wanting to be there. So that's a snapshot of C C M I. It's um, always more layered on decision-making and what works best for a company, what worked best for, um, the city.
Sage, did, did I understand you to say that, that, um, if we had wanted to, if we had the authority to extend the, the pilot beyond fifteen years, that we would have been able to keep them in town?
Uh, not necessarily. There were a couple of factors in that play in terms of the, the, um, where the pilot landed. So the, I, you know, we were still working with them in terms of um, needing to increase the pilot to be something for consideration for the full um, board. And the pilots that Adam can help me out are fifteen to twenty years and then they do get renewed. I don't think that this I D A has done a, say a thirty-year pilot. Is that correct, Adam?
Yeah, I think the last one was the Ramada and that was before our time here.
I heard you say the I D A wouldn't allow it and that's, gets back to my.
Wait, I don't want to speak to the I D A, so I'm not saying we didn't allow it.
I think we should control our own destiny. I think we should put them in town and could have.
Because the question for you all is if the prices that there would be no city tax for five or plus years, is that what you would like to see for economic development? We still get the jobs in the town, um, but the city has another opportunity for that property versus getting a very low um, rate of return in terms of income coming in. It's, so it's weighing that. And if, if the threshold is that at, at any cost, you know, bring a, a business here, that's something that I would like to hear, but it is not what I've heard from um, necessarily from this council or, or previous councils or even uh, the community members of wanting to have a, a more balanced approach that businesses, because of our high tax rate, do, you know, we, the pilot is something that allows us to be more competitive, but if it means us selling out completely, I have not heard that. That is something that council, community or, or the I D A wants.
Well, I don't think we had the chance to weigh in on it, so.
Yeah.
I don't want that.
Let's weigh on it, in on it later.
Was zero the only option?
So. It depends. It can't be for the Koch brothers and Guardian Glass, but a small, I mean, it's.
No, no, let's find out about this situation. Was zero the only, was zero the only option that we're going to live with?
Not for the full amount, but if we want to dive into this, we can go into, we, I don't have the the suggested pilot. If you want to meet with the I D A, I can definitely set that up so you can have a conversation.
All right, well, that's a bit of, that's a bit of a trap question. That's a, that's a, that's an unfair question to ask this whole group. If we could only live with zero as the option. And then I asked you to confirm that and you were like, well, no, that's not necessary.
The zero option was only for the beginning of the pilot and then it increased from there. And I don't have the numbers on me to give you that, but I can definitely share that if you're interested.
Would you please?
Sage, I, I thought that we couldn't have any say over the I D A.
You don't have a say over, but if you have thoughts or, or, um, comments on it, just as they hear from community members too, that's absolutely something that's important. You are affected by it as a, as a city entity getting taxes, you definitely are. So having your voice is, is important. But I guess I'm getting mixed messages here.
And when John says that we should be in control of our own destiny, does that mean that we could not have an I D A? Or I?
You have an I D, you have the I D A. So I'm, I guess maybe that's a question for Counselor Pruitt.
I think you can have rules within any organization. We ought to have a say in that sort of thing. Uh, I'd say the top say not let someone else decide it for us.
Right, because.
I'm not saying change the world, but at least have the rules that allow us to defend for our own interests.
The I D A gives out the pilots, but we don't have a say over the I D A. And I don't know if there's another structure that other places use. I mean, I think that the I D A should, Frank, I'm, I'm not finished. When I'm finished, then you don't have to keep putting your hand up. So what I'm, so my question is that, like, why is we, if we want to say, like, I think the I D A should be focusing on putting a pilot for, like, childcare, because the city lacks it and it would bring jobs and it would serve more needs, but we can't have a say over that. Uh, if John says we should be in our own destiny, is there a situation where an I D A doesn't exist and the city council grants pilots? No.
City can't grant pilot.
L D C that does that stuff, right?
Right.
Right. The, the purpose of an I D A in most cases is because a, a, a local municipality, like a city, a town or village, uh, can't issue a pilot. So other boards are formed, other agencies are formed, like an L D C, uh, that can do certain things and like an I D A. Um, there are uh, county I D As as opposed to local I D As. Um, we're one of the few that has a local. Um, and one thing they keep in mind is that, um, they do issue the pilots and in some cases, the I D As actually keep the, the funds from the pilot. Ours does not. It's been a longstanding thing that they don't, which is a benefit. Um, but the, the, basically the purpose of the I D A is, is to, uh, do economic development and bring in, uh, uh, businesses that would otherwise not come in without a pilot. Because, uh, a city or a local government is not allowed to do those.
Uh huh, okay, thank you.
I, I do want to dive into this. When you have a, a business that we all approved a resolution to of granting them, you know, what they wanted and we lose them to the town of Geneva, when we have land elsewhere that we could have, maybe did something to keep them, it's worth the fight. I mean, and I think that there should be something that we do dive into. I mean, just like there's, when a business, when we hear like Tops is moving out, I think that you know, city manager, city staff, somebody should be calling these places and going, hey, what do we have to do to keep you here? I mean, I know for a fact that Tops would have stayed if we would have pressured them.
Frank, that's, that's not true at all. I, I talked with them. I talked with, with the, the owner of the, of the plaza multiple times. And we had those conversations. It was not an issue. It was not a Geneva issue. It was a, it was a Tops issue. And it, it was the.
Maybe that was the example, but I'm talking about C C M I. This is a perfect example.
But we just want that the I D A gives the pilots, right?
It was not going to be a beneficial pilot, I can tell you.
All I'm saying is, is I think that we need to find why, what was more appealing from the town than, than we couldn't offer them. They were here for all these years. We were invested in them.
Yeah, the benefit is, the benefit is not just the money, right? It's the trend. So now we're setting a trend that businesses are, are thriving in Geneva but can't thrive anymore, that they reach a ceiling and then they have to move out. And I understand this is a win for the region, but I don't, but this is an objective loss for the city. And the reason for it is because it's creating a trend where businesses get stuck without the right pilots in New York State. That's how businesses are done. Every business that employs more than ten people in Geneva is likely here from a pilot. I mean, you've got the Ramada, you've got Guardian, you've got all these other businesses. And it's not really Geneva's fault that New York State and has such, such high taxes. But it is a bit of Geneva's fault that we are, our local taxes are so high. And it's our responsibility to keep those businesses here. And I think for me personally, and for a couple residents that reached out to me to ask me questions that I was ill-prepared to answer. I didn't like finding out about this in the Finger Lakes Times. And I really wish, I really wish the fact that what we voted on fell through, could have happened, could have reached our emails before the Times published it. That was really embarrassing. And it's, it's, it, I don't like feeling ill-prepared. And I can't, as a part-time counselor, constantly, three times a week, ask, did anything change? Did anything change? Did anything change? That's not right. That's not even a sustainable business model. So if things as important as resolutions that we voted on really need to come down our way. And C C M I, I can't believe would have manufactured a contract that was so detrimental to Geneva when we've heralded, we've heralded them as a partner of ours. They care about Geneva. So I just don't know if it's something to say in, in the public forum, that their offer was this objectively bad. I can't imagine it.
Well, I think one, one thing you're missing here is, one, you got to have confidence in staff and what they're doing, which we've talked about in the past. And the other one is, when you develop pilots specifically for one organization or one company, what is the effect on other organizations or other companies that you haven't developed those pilots for? So it's, it's an equity-based type of decision that staff has to be involved in, and staff has to make when it comes to these kind of decisions. And we have retained many companies in the city. And we have retained many companies in the city of Geneva by having pilots and reverse pilots. So there's a lot of different opportunities that we've had out there that have provided not only to land businesses, but retain businesses over the long run.
So when you mean pilot equity, do you mean like more or less the mindset where you already have a pilot, so we're not giving you anymore? We got to save pilots for other people? Is that kind of what you mean?
No, I'm talking about a, a business that's been very successful in the city of Geneva without a pilot.
Which ones?
There's plenty of them. Solar Village is one of them right now. That's one of the most recent ones without a pilot.
That, that received a $1.8 million grant. That was worse than a pilot. That was, that was just our taxpayers' money.
That wasn't the city of Geneva's.
No, it wasn't. It was New York State collected taxes for state taxes. So what do you think is more detrimental to the economy, a subsidy credit or a pilot?
I'm talking about the city of Geneva benefit.
Just in general, I mean, would you rather, would you rather give someone a coupon?
Are you familiar with the other pilots that we have in the city of Geneva?
This is the city. The 1.7 came from all the taxpayers in New York State.
I understand.
That was good.
I would also say too, that if, if, if we got in a habit of keeping, maintaining or, uh, uh, keeping every company that, that was here and not letting them go at all costs, I mean, our negotiating power for future pilots is zero and, and.
Right, no, yeah.
All over. And, and so.
I'm not advocating for an extreme situation.
I will say that in, in a lot of situations, the financial isn't the main, it's, it's a huge concern. It's not the main concern. Um, and I would say in our dealings with CCMI, they were, you know, it's nothing against them. They were very pleasant to deal with. Um, we, we couldn't make the numbers work in our favor that we felt was, uh, beneficial to the city when there, there are possibilities, you know, down the road within that 15 years that maybe another company comes along that would want that site. Um, you know, we appreciate their, you know, the time they were in Geneva. We're happy they're staying in the region. But, um, I think ultimately, you know, not just the city, but CCMI felt that it was just a better fit in the town. And, 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 you know, we don't, we're not going to win them all, um, certainly. So we, you know, we wish they stayed, but we, we didn't want it to be at, at the cost of, you know, something long-term.
Okay, can we move on?
Kid, I, I just have a. Let's move on. I, I just have a clarification question, as soon as if I'm naive. A pilot only applies to the local tax, right? It does not apply to the school tax.
It applies to, um, the local, um, bid, school, county. Um, so they're all involved in, if, if it's in the, I, I shouldn't say always bid, if it's in the bid district.
Right.
It would apply. Yep.
So, so it, it, it applies to all the taxes then, the, the school tax as well?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
You ready to talk Zodos? Okay. Zodos had a developer that was, um, extremely interested and we were working diligently, uh, on the zoning issues. We were ready to advance any zoning that was required to be able to make this work. The developer.
Is this Legion or Zodos?
Yeah, Legion.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. American Legion.
I wanted to listen in the right way.
I appreciate, I would not want to be talking about Zodos. Oh, no. Which is not Zodos anymore, it's Hankel. Um, so the American Legion Post 396 had a developer that was very interested. Just a little slate history on that developer. That developer had a strong background in hotels. And, um, that was their forte. When they were moving into this venture, they had different ideas. There was a hotel partial and then there was also condos that were in there. And they, even more, we're looking at some other amenities there. And as they were working through their issues, um, and getting close to closing on this, they, uh, they might have needed some zoning. We're, we're bending over backwards. I compliment staff and the staff's relationship. We were working with the American Legion. We were working with the developers. We were working with legal to make sure that we were in alignment to be able to make this deal happen. What happened was the developer being primarily in the, um, hotel, um, industry uh, and COVID hit, took a serious hit in their business and had to take a serious look at their business plan. And as they were looking at the business plan, the current investment that was outside their normal, um, activities, being condos and others outside the hotel amenity industry, um, didn't make sense to them anymore at this time. So we were in close conversations with the, uh, the American Legion. I've been talking with the commander and the executive board. Um, they are very appreciative of all our efforts. They understood that, uh, the deal did fall through. Right now they are in a good financial status. Uh, the realtors told them to, to hold on tight. Um, don't bend over backwards over this one. Good things are on the horizon because they have a valuable piece of property. And we also, myself and the city manager have also reached out to these, the commander and the executive board to let them know that if there's anything we can do to support them moving forward. But as of right now, the developer has pulled out of the deal for right now.
So we want to make sure, we want to make sure when, I don't know when this is going to go to press. I, I guess we want to make sure that it's not, uh, spun in a way that it had something to do with zoning, which it sounds like it did not.
No, I, I made sure of that when we talked to the commander and the executive committee. I wanted to make sure that they understood that, we understood that. Um, their big issue was they've kind of made a commitment on a piece of property. And they made a commitment on that piece of property with another local developer. And, uh, I let them know that, um, if they needed any support with that local developer to talk about that, um, investment that they needed to hold off with, to let me know, we'd work on that also. Okay. I'm going to move on to our next work session. I'm looking for two volunteers. Topic one, topic two. If you want to raise your hand now and you're excited, great. If you want to send an email, that's fine. We can hook up with that.
I'll raise my hand, but understand if other people don't, you know, want to go first. So I can fill in if no one will.
Okay. Counselor Salamanja, Counselor Cameron.
Well, I, you know, I, um, hopefully the, in the next week, the, the PRB issue will be over with. And I would like to pursue some kind of a plan for how we move the railroad. So I, there's some other people that are working on it too, that have just in ad hoc ways and maybe just pencil out something. If people, if, you know, I, I don't, I, I need a little time to figure this out, but.
And Counselor Kim, I like your focus. I would like to have that discussion also at our February 13th, um, work session, our, our retreat. So I'd like to bring that up there also with some other ideas. So that's a good idea.
Okay.
I have a, I have a takeaway item. I am going to contact the county supervisors and try to bring them to our next work session in March.
That's great.
In April. I will work on that myself. Uh, we'll also talk about any unfinished business, which I think we want to continue some economic development discussions at our next work session. And if there's, uh, please do some homework. If there's any clarifications for the upcoming agenda at our next meeting, bring those issues up so that staff has a few days, a couple of days to kind of go through those. And if any current issues come up between now and the next Monday, we get together for our work session, let's bring them up and see if we can have those discussions and bring any answers to the, to the table. Questions, concerns, comments?
At our, at our next work session, going back to Counselor Pruitt's suggestion, which I think is a really easy thing and that, and timing is important. Can, can we talk about the penalty on the water bill? Since if we do it at the next work session, we might be able to snag it for the next water bill, since the current water bill is due today. And, and, uh, and John has brought it up a number of times, and I think it's, um, and I, I think it's something that's easy to discuss.
Can I ask, is that a discussion? Is that a resolution? Do you need a real vote? How do we get that done? Because we could move to add it to, you know? Is it, is it a head nod from five of us?
Good question. Sage, I'm, I'm not even sure where we left that to tell you the truth. And is that something we would like to bring up to our work session? Or is it something we want to bring up for discussion before then?
Uh.
The question was, how do you, how do you decide? Is, does it need a vote? Does it need just consensus?
For the topic for the work session, you mean?
No, to get rid of the 15% late fee on water bills.
We, I think it's a fee change, so it would be a resolution.
It would be a resolution. I know the rates are set by, uh, either a local, I think their rates are set by an ordinance. Um, but this would be the penalty, which I believe can be changed just by a resolution.
Okay, so we'll draw that up.
Yeah, we'll double check that it can be just done by a resolution versus something else.
Nothing else? I'll look for a motion to adjourn. Counselor Cameron, second by Counselor Peeler. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?